Chris Smith, a pledge of allegiance by Councilmember David Montgomery, Jr., please stand.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the day, Lord. We thank you for all that you've given us and thank you for the blessings that you bestow unto our great city, Lord. We pray that you be with each and every one of us today. Be with each council member as we conduct the business of the citizens of Bossier City, Lord, and as we depart here today, be with each and every one of us so we travel safe. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Good, Phyllis?
Yes, sir. We had complaints and we had to turn it up from the upstairs and so now I'm trying to turn it back down real quick.
Okay.
They couldn't hear it TV land.
All right.
Please face the flag and join me in our pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance-
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Real call, please.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Hammond.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Maggio.
Here.
Council, in accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings laws and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the city council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda item may approach and state their name and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. All other audience members are asked to please observe the meeting quietly and if there is a need for audience members to hold a conversation or take a phone call, you are asked to please step out of the meeting. City council-appointed sergeant-at-arms have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting in order to maintain orderly conduct of the meeting.
The chair will approve minutes of February 21st, 2023, regular council meeting and dismissed with the reading.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments from anyone? Let's get some votes, counsel.
Motion carries.
Counsel, the item under new business, I think we have a recommendation.
Make the motion that we delete item six under new business.
Second.
Any comments on that item? Does anyone want to speak before we vote? Okay. We also can make the motion to approve as-
I have all those two separate ones.
Oh, you got it separate. Okay, let's vote on that, counsel. Ask your vote.
Motion carries.
Make the motion that we accept the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion, second. And any comments? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Any ceremony matters today?
No, sir.
Recognition of guests, I think we may have commissioned persons here. I see one, I don't know any others. But welcome. And next item.
Bids, witness opening of seal bids for bid number two-two dash one-one-one-one, nineteen oh five Traffic Street demolition.
Good afternoon, counsel, Mayor Chandler. Today we're opening bids for the demolition of the dilapidated structure in nineteen oh five Traffic Street, bid twenty-two dash eleven-eleven. There were no addendums. The administrative court recommended the demolition of the structure as soon as illegally possible at the January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. The first bid is from Eagle Industries LLC. Their bid is for sixty-five hundred dollars and they do have their bid bond. The next bid is from Red Tail Contracting LLC. Their bid is for seven thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. That's seven-two-seven-eight point zero-zero and they also have their bid bond. And the final bid is from Three Gen Construction LLC. Their bid is for seven thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars. That's seven-four-nine-nine point zero-zero and they also have their bid bond. I ask that you approve the reading of these bids.
Make the motion we approve the bids.
Second.
Thank you. Have a motion, Mr. Williams, second. Mr. Smith, any discussion? And any comments? Thank you. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. With Mr. Montgomery showing his absence. Public hearing actions on unfinished business, adopt an ordinance to appropriate three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the twenty-seventeen LCDA bond fund to acquire a new point-of-sale system and provide additional information system upgrades at Brookshire Grocery Arena. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Free, second. Mr. Williams, discussion, counsel. The floor is open for someone to comment. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to amend Article Two of Section one-one-zero-point-four-three of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Bossier City, operation of vehicles, to specifically regulate motor vehicle noise and establishing an area of prohibition of unmuffled compression brakes, engine brakes, or jake braking on Benton Road, LA Three, Exhibit A, US Highway Seventy-One, Exhibit B, and Airline Drive, LA Thirty-one-oh-five, Exhibit C, and providing penalties for violation thereof and authorizing the city administration to apply to the Louisiana State Department of Transportation and Development to request permitting for the installation of regulatory signage on said state Louisiana highways. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Smith and seconded by Mr. Maggio. Any discussion?
My name is Kerry Chandler. My address is two-nine-two-four Heather Lane in Bossier City, seven-eleven-eleven. Two questions. Where is it? What is Exhibit A, B, and C? What does that encompass?
Is Mr. Patrick here today?
Sir, those were attached to the agenda on the website and on the information that was sent out to the public media. Those exhibits were attached.
Okay, all right. My second question. Who's going to provide the penalties for violation? Are we just going to make them up as we go? Or are we going to have a set penalty for it?
We're going to get Mr. Patrick to come forth and address that.
The in the ordinance will be introduced into the code of ordinances and I believe it's five hundred dollars for the penalty if they're caught.
It'll be in writing.
It's in the code. It's in the ordinance that'll be if it's voted on today. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick. Thank you, Mr. Chandler. Any other discussion? Any other comments? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. New business, adopt an ordinance to approve the application of Jeff Raely, Raely and Associates for a zoning amendment to change the zoning classification from I-two, heavy industrial, to B-one, business commercial office on a certain tract of land being four-point-six-five-two acres, more or less, located at twenty-eight-twenty Beckett Street, Bossier City, Louisiana, for additional education space for first Bossier, and that's first and final reading and favorable by MPC.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Williams. Okay. Any discussion? Excuse me.
I think it's Montgomery.
Oh, was she? Okay. All right, Mr. Montgomery. All right. Any discussion? And comments? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to approve the application of David Holland, ASB General Contractor, for a zoning amendment to change the zoning classification from RLD, residential low density, to RMD, residential medium density, being point-three acres, more or less, located at six-two-nine Leon Street, Bossier City, Louisiana. First and final reading, favorable by MPC.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Williams, second. Mr. Smith, any discussion? And the floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to approve the application of Matt Abrams, Abrams Architecture, for a zoning amendment to change the zoning classification from RLD, residential low density, to B-one, business commercial office on a certain tract of land being point-three acres, more or less, located at thirteen-fifty-two Cox Street, Bossier City, Louisiana. First and final reading, favorable by MPC.
So moved. Second.
Motion, Mr. Smith, second. Mr. Williams, discussion, counsel. Comments? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to approve the application of Erica Gillum, Street Car Station LLC, for conditional use approval for the sale of high and low content alcohol for on and off-premise consumption at Street Car Snowballs located at four-oh-nine Barksdale Boulevard, Bossier City, Louisiana. First and final reading, favorable by MPC.
So moved. Second.
Motion, Mr. Williams, second. Mr. Maggio, discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, I've got a couple of questions. Do we have a determination yet on whether this is going to be a bar or if this is going to be a bar restaurant?
Carl, I'd ask you with the Bossier MPC, based on ATC, they consider her a restaurant. Snowballs are considered food because they're in a frozen state, so.
They're in a what state?
It's frozen.
Frozen state.
So they, so they will allow all ages in since it is considered a restaurant?
Correct. And I believe they've already issued it.
So when you pour whiskey in it, it won't be frozen anymore, though?
It'll still be frozen. It'll be pre-made and frozen, but slushy.
Nice.
Oh, that's right. I forgot ice is considered a food.
Kind of like ice cream. Falls in that category.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any comments? Please cast your vote, counsel.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached joint cooperative endeavor agreement with the Caddo Bossier Parish's Port Commission. First reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion, Mr. Hammond, second. Mr. Maggio. Counsel, as you know, we had, what's it, Maggio?
Montgomery.
Montgomery. Oh, okay. All right. Counsel, as you know, we had an open-to-public workshop on the second of March. The CEA was read in its entirety by the city clerk. After the workshop, each council member was tasked to submit his revisions, recommendation to the city attorney. Mr. Jacob responded to each member recommendation and incorporated some revisions to the CEA. Today, we will have our city clerk to read aloud those revisions.
Yes, sir. The first revision is in Section one-point-zero-four under the term. It went from a ninety-nine-year term to a forty-year. It says for a period of forty years commencing on the blank day of twenty-twenty-three and ending on the blank day of twenty-sixty-three. In Section three-point-zero-two, receipt of sewage, there was language added to the third paragraph or to the second paragraph, I'm sorry, the end of the second paragraph, "Nonwithstanding the foregoing, it is understood and agreed this agreement specifically contemplates Bossier City may provide wastewater treatment services to the commission and users connected to the system in the future unless and until the governmental entities effectuate the terms and conditions of this section. This agreement only provides for the construction and maintenance of the facilities described in Exhibit D." And then for the, another paragraph was added, "For the purposes of this section, the term facilities shall be defined as any and all line structures and improvements constructed by the commission pursuant to the project construction plans as contemplated by and shown in Exhibit D in connection with the bonds described in Section one-point-zero-two."
Thank you. Any comments, counsel?
There's a few more.
Got one more?
There's more.
Okay.
In Section three-point-zero-five, invoicing, in the very last paragraph, there was a section added, "For the purposes of this section, the terms treatment expenses shall consist of all reasonable costs and expenses incurred in the treatment and testing of water delivered to the commission and users connected to the system, including operational and personnel costs, together with all expenses incurred for the necessary maintenance of the facilities required for the delivery of water as defined in Section three-point-zero-two here and above." And then in the, the third paragraph was actually moved to its own section. It's now going to be Section three-point-zero-five-point-one, prepayments. And then there was a strikeout, which will be in Section three-point-zero-seven, operation and maintenance. In the third paragraph, the words, "In addition upon payoff of construction loans necessary to develop the commission's water and sewer facilities as demonstrated in Exhibits A and B, the commission agrees to donate and Bossier City agrees to accept said facilities into Bossier City's waterwork system." That section was deleted. And those are the changes that were made.
Thank you. And I think at the workshop, we suggested that if you had more comments that you wanted to make, you were to submit those to the city clerk. And based on what she shared today, there's been no additional comments.
Yes, sir.
But we will open the floor today for you to give your comments. Counsel, do you have any discussion on this item?
I have a few small questions for Mr. Russianbach. At the workshop, Mr. Hammond asked the question that if we were to, if there were to be some form of development down Highway Seventy-One that would subsequently tie into this new line, would that, go ahead and start the payments to the port, and I believe the answer was yes. My question is, if there were to be said developments prior to the completion of the two thousand acres, would it be possible for the city to tap into its already existing lines to supply water there? Or would we have to use the new lines that we're going to create that'll be the property of the port?
There are no existing lines where this project is going.
On Hope Street, though, we have lines. And so I guess if all of that area were to be developed, could we tie into existing infrastructure that we have?
You talking about from Hope Street on down south?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, the water main ends at Hope Street. This project picks up at Hope Street and goes south. So any development south of Hope Street-
Would have to go off this new-
Or something of a different color.
Right. Okay, that's all I wanted. And then just to be clear, because I think there's some misunderstanding out there, we do not pay a dollar unless the port is buying water. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so, and what we pay is the lesser of the net revenues or the bond payment, whichever is less. Is that correct?
We pay-
It's net income.
Net income. I'm sorry.
You know, again, we go back to people listening, they repeat, so that's a-
That's a big one. You're right. I apologize for that.
No, I just, I wanted to make sure for the record, we have the terms correct.
So for example, if we had a small development that tapped onto that line prior to the port having some big water user, naturally, whatever revenues received by that, the operational expenses associated with that would be less than the principal and interest payment on a bond issue that the port has, therefore, we would pay the lesser of those two, and on top of that, get fifty percent of the, you know, the commensurate revenue.
Right. I just want to make sure that was clear because I think there was some miscommunication out there about what Bossier's paying. And so, and then I guess the last question I have, are we going to have to, so some of these lines are going to end in Caddo Parish. Are we going to have to have some type of agreement with either the City of Shreveport or the Caddo Commission for our employees to go and do maintenance if necessary? Or are we covered?
Mr. Smith, I think I can answer that question. The right of way for this line is, belongs to the commission, to the port. And as long as we, you know, we have the responsibility during the term of the agreement to maintain those lines. And so the only permission, of course, we would need would be from the port, which of course we would get because they want us to maintain that line. So the port, the right of way, it belongs to the commission.
Gotcha. All right. That's all I have.
Any other questions?
No, I do think that the workshop we had was very useful, man. You answered a lot of questions. Eric answered a lot of questions, you know, because I know we all had some questions that day and I think they all got answered.
Very good. I'm glad.
Yeah, I mean, I think the one good thing that is going to come out of this is, as a lot of people know, South Bossier, the development in South Bossier has not always been there. And one reason that it has not been there is because the infrastructure was not there. I think once this project is done, I think the infrastructure will be there and I think we will have the growth development. Even though it's outside the city limits, they're going to have to turn around and come back northbound in order to buy groceries, get gas, you know, get their prescriptions. I think it's going to be a win-win for the city and for the, especially for the residents of South Bossier, improving our water quality.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, man.
And we will open the floor for comments, please.
He was trying to trip me. David Crockett, six-five-three, Dubain Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. I also appreciated the workshop. I thought a lot of issues were raised and I think these are great improvements. I would recommend that the councilman, when you get a chance after you review the new one, to go back and look at your comments because I think some of the comments weren't actually included. I don't know that the definitions that we were talking about were all included in there. I think a couple of good questions were made about that. I also have some clarifications. I think some possible public misunderstandings may need to be addressed. First of all, I wanted to make sure that people understand that it's been covered and I think the councilman- and I think the councilmen fully understand that the debt is certainly eventually going to be the responsibility of the city. Even though it's not going to be on Bossier City's books, it's going to have to be included in the balance sheets as some sort of obligation, somewhere in the notes or somewhere. I think that's normal for public disclosure, for financials. I also think that Bossier City will be paying significantly more interest than some people may understand. I would like to see that we would publish the debt servicing schedule that was mentioned in the last meeting, so the public understands what the total life cycle cost to the city are going to be for just... Or life... The servicing of the debt. I believe that, you know, we were all listening to financial news, and I think Secretary Powell just mentioned that he's going to be raising rates aggressively, so we could be approaching 7% on these new bonds. And that could be a significant amount of money that people may not realize. Then there... The other thing that I think that was addressed in general in the meeting were the risks associated with the additional infrastructure that could be required in the out years. The infrastructure that Bossier City has right now is a convenience at low cost, because it was bought during low interest rate periods. If we grow beyond what the infrastructure is for the city right now, it's going to come at a huge cost, maybe 30 to 50%. Who knows? Maybe more than that whenever it has to be replaced. So when you think about growing throughout the parish, like we've been talking about, whether it be south or north or east, you know, it could cost a lot more to replace that infrastructure, because I think the additional cost for city plant and wastewater transport and things like that, you know, are going to be additional concerns. And they're not really addressed in the... What I would like to have seen from the city engineer or Manchak, in that case, is some sort of an estimate. You know, what would be the 10-year, 20-year estimate for the demands on the city's water system? No one has put that out in front of us. You know, what would be the increased demand be? And how much would it actually cost? So I think before you can really talk about what a break-even cost is, it's really, what is the cost for the growth over the period and whether you're going to be able to capture enough with the additional revenue to actually pay for new plant and infrastructure in the out years? And I think that's what some of the great questions that were asked in that meeting were all about. I'm not saying that this is a negative project. I don't want to be negative about it, but I think we need to understand what that is. And I think there was one miscalculation during the meeting about what the break-even point was. I think at the 3 million gallons, we would have... There would be a total revenue of 536 million times the 3 million gallons. That would be 1.6, and that would be divided by 2, so that amount would be 800 and something million dollars that you would make out as the 3 million dollars is sold. So I think that's pretty much what I wanted to cover, and I think that clarifies it. And I think this kind of... Just want to make one more point, and I'm going to say this respectfully, that I do believe in the long run, the city and the mayor ought to consider that we need a city engineer that is not a contractor that's doing this kind of work. When I looked at the charts, I saw Manchak and the Port Authority drafting all this work. It wasn't Bossier City and the Port Authority. I think it... I think we ought to really consider that the city and its long-range plans and projects needs a broker that has a fiduciary responsibility only to the city when we're negotiating these, because the mayor...
Mr. Crockett.
Oh, am I beyond my three points?
I appreciate your insight. We are out of time.
Well, thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Let me correct you, though. We said 850 million is 850,000.
Did I say million?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, 800, yeah. That would be a way overstatement. But I was just talking about the million and the gallons, you know, the 3 million gallons. But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crockett.
I'm Mr. Darby.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jacobs, was it not you and Mr. Malone that crafted the cooperative endeavor agreement?
I worked very...
Did you work for the city of Bossier, sir?
I did.
On behalf of who?
The city of Bossier. On behalf of the council and the mayor.
Thank you very much. Can you please have that for the record?
I think Mr. England mentioned in our workshop, the responsibility of the debt. And so that was addressed in the workshop, too. And he can come up again and just clarify how that debt is not on the backs of the citizen of Bossier. Give your name and address, please.
Thank you. Eric England, 6,000 Doug Addaway Boulevard, Shreveport, Louisiana, Cell 115. President Darby, members of the council. I'll be glad to... And in structuring these comments, I'll try to deflect them from the previous comments that were just made and address them to the council, not so much to the inaccuracies that were just presented to you in the public comments. The interest rates are .95%, less than 1% interest rate. .95%. And 4.9% blended. I think there are only two or three entities in the state of Louisiana who could achieve a lower interest rate than that, just based on their overall bond rating. The port's bond rating is magnificent. And there are just a couple other governing authorities that can achieve the highest possible rating to provide you the lowest possible interest rate. The port's credit is good. Our debt coverage ratio is excellent. And we're seeing that. And I would tell you this. It's one thing for DEQ to loan the port that much money, 6.5 million, over 20 years at .95%. But the remainder of the bonds at 4.9%, we have an individual entity, rather stated, an entity that desires to purchase 100% of it. This deal is not going to undergo traditional underwriting, which will, by that process, incur additional fees. We're not going through that process. This is going to be a private placement of bonds. And we already have an institution that's ready to buy 100% of this paper. So I think that should put to bed any concerns about a high cost of borrowing in this regard. Secondly, about the city of Bossier's long-term obligation, you have the ability to walk away from this deal. It was one of the requests of the council, and of course, the port said yes to it. It was after 40 years, you walk away. So in 40 years, when you would see O and M cost on the rise... You're not going to see O and M cost in the first... Well, you're going to have the warranty period, but you're going to have O and M cost in the early years. After 40 years, when the real O and M, you know, things need replacement, we have that obligation, if y'all choose to walk away. So all in all, I believe that your attorney represented you well. Our attorney received those comments from... Through you, to your council, received them well. They were all accepted. We didn't challenge any of them. We said, "Okay." So I appreciate the workshop. Again, I stand by what my commission has directed me to do, which is present what we think is a good collaboration, cooperative endeavor agreement for our two entities. Thank you very much. I'll be glad to answer any questions, of course.
Thank you, Mr. England.
Thank you.
Any other comments? This is the introduction of this CEA. I think we will adopt it in, what, two weeks?
Yes, sir.
If it's voted to be introduced today?
It'll be the March 21st meeting.
Okay. All right, counsel, any... No more discussion? We have a motion to second. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached agreement between the city of Bossier City and CG6 Technology Consulting LLC for professional services and amending the 2023 general fund budget to appropriate $40,000 from fund balance for consulting services. First reading?
So moved. Second.
Motion, Mr. Williams, second, Mr. Montgomery. And any discussion? Yeah, what is this for?
This is to engage a virtual CTO. It's going to be the same consultant that did our IT audit recently.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve placement in the official minutes, the appointment of John Michael Garcia as the College List Board Member of the Bossier City Municipal Fire and Police Civil Service Board, appointment effective March 7, 2023, and expires on March 6, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is the appointee here? Thank you, Mr. Garcia. If you would like to tell us a little bit about you and...
Thank you for having me, President Darby, and council members. I'm John Michael Garcia. Live here in the Bossier City community. Small business owner here in the community. Live here, got my wife and five kids here in Bossier City. We live in North Bossier, and I want to thank y'all for the opportunity to represent this community and do good things for Bossier City.
We thank you. Anyone else?
I can speak of Mr. Garcia's character very highly. He's a very outstanding businessperson here in the community. Fantastic father, fantastic husband. He's just an all-around fantastic person. I can't say enough good words about him.
Counsel, speaking, Mr. Darby. I recently met Mr. Garcia, I don't know, a month or so ago. And he gives his word, he's going to do something, he does it. I mean, good guy, good guy.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Great. Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Garcia, beside what they said, we're going to take your word that you're a good guy.
Thank you.
We take their word.
You'll take my word, don't you? I grew up with his dad and his uncle and everybody. I know he's a great guy.
Yeah.
I just thank him for, you know, wanting to help us in the civil service. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. I appreciate your opportunity. I won't let you down.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, we had our motion, a second. Any comments? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve reappointment of John Mark Robinson and Billy Jordan to the E911 Board, appointments effective March 1, 2023, and expire March 1, 2027.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Hammond, second, Mr. Maggio. Is Mr...
Yeah, I think they're both here.
Okay. Maybe they can come up as well.
Good afternoon, Mr. Darby, counsel.
Hello.
I am Fred McCann, the Director of Bossier 911. I'm here representing Mr. Robinson and Mr. Jordan.
Okay, okay. So you are not Mr. Robinson?
No, sir. I'm here representing them.
Okay. All right. Well, we appreciate you. We don't get a chance to see some members of board, so when they come to the council, we like for them to come to be introduced. But we're glad that you're here. We appreciate your work and the work of the board. Any other comments? Thank you, sir. We have a motion, a second. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Consider updating the 2023 meeting calendar by removing meetings on May 16 and May 30 and add a meeting on May the 23rd.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Freeze, second, Mr. Smith.
Sounds so exciting.
And any discussion? Any comments?
And those motions were to approve this update? That motion to approve this update to the calendar?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
You don't care if that may?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay, just checking.
No further comment, please. Cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Any reports? Any announcements?
Yes, sir.
Any comments from Mayor Chandler?
And I have to concur with Clinton that I thought fine for the noise was 500, it's 250. Just want to make that clarification.
Thank you, Courtney.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
I would like to congratulate Mr. Chris Smith and Courtney on their new baby son that they had just recently. So congratulations.
Thank you.
And I'd like to say to all councilmen that I appreciate working with y'all each and every day and all what we do for Bossier City. So I do appreciate each and every one of y'all. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. May.
Need a stand, sir?